Yep, it looks like it's to you. Great, thank you.
Yeah. So this is now streaming.
I'll be back.
Hey Bernie.
Hey there Faith. Hey Amanda.
Hi.
Hey Jess.
Good evening. I'm standing in for Amber tonight as it's her 30th birthday. Happy birthday Amber.
Happy birthday Amber. I had sent an email to Amber earlier regarding people that'll be attending the meeting this evening or participating in the meeting this evening. Should I forward that to you then Jess?
That'd be great, thank you Bernie.
Jess? Just letting you know, I don't need to be a panelist. I'm not, I don't have anything on the agenda, so I'm just here in case I might be needed.
Hey, good evening everyone.
Good evening.
Hey Izzy.
Oh forgive my hair, it is a mess. Alright, we have Counselor Diaz, Counselor Craig, Counselor Bakay. Everybody bearing, Counselor Garcia Molina, loving that.
Hey everyone.
Hello.
Give us another minute here. Counselor Arroyo, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hey Jamie.
Has anyone checked in on Pete?
I'm doing so at this juncture. I don't know why I said juncture instead of right now.
You love your words.
Two dollar word.
Zavi, thank you for your 28 questions.
You're quite welcome.
I know that, I know that some of them will get answered during the overview presentation I do today. Or tonight. I think about the second half were a public works related one, so I'm gonna shoot those out to Mr. Campbell and he will be able to, he will be will be pre-warned for questions coming to him on Saturday.
Thanks. Yeah, I just was like, I know myself that on Saturday, if I show up and we have all these hours of presentations, I'm gonna end up asking a million and one questions. So let me send them ahead of time.
So wait, that means 28 is your limit?
Oh no, that's just the, that's just the tip of the iceberg.
It's the starting point.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
I am going to go ahead and call this the December 1st, December, which is the meeting of the Council of the City of Lancaster to order. Good evening, councilors, Mr. Harris, Mr. Hopkins, Mrs. King, Mayor Sarachi. Give me just a second here. Mr. Harris, would you call the role of members?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Arroyo.
Here.
Ms. Bakay?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz? Ms. Diaz? Ms. Diaz, you're muted.
Just having audio problems earlier, so I'm not sure if she can hear yet. Smiling.
Janet, can you hear us?
He's texting me.
You're muted at the moment, if you can, I'll try that.
Can you hear us?
Do thumbs up.
No. I don't see anything from this end, Patrick, that we can adjust.
No. Janet, can you call in on your phone?
I'll text for that.
I don't know that Janet can hear us.
Yeah, I'm sure she can. We should all be a lot better at charades by now.
You would think.
I swear she's showing up in the meeting.
Showing unmuted, but I still don't hear.
I don't know what we can. Is that you now Counselor on 2992? Can you hear us? Can you hear us now Counselor? I don't know what to say folks.
Give me just a second.
There, you're showing unmuted Counselor Diaz, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, yes. Can you hear me?
I, we must have the wrong, we're looking for Counselor Diaz and that's not 2992, that's not you?
Also, this is Dave Achill.
I'm sorry.
Thank you Dave.
This freed up a mystery for us.
Okay.
Just a second folks. Hey.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I can hear you. Alright, everybody, we are go. Technically, we are in the middle of roll call. Counselor Diaz, are you present?
I guess.
We'll go with that. Mr. Garcia Molina.
Here.
Mr. Soto. And President Smith-Wadeell.
Here. Thank you, everybody. You know, sometimes technology is challenging and difficult for all of us, and if 2020 hasn't been a lesson in that. So we're moving on to the approval of the November 2nd, 2020 commitments.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments from council? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Harris, do we, are both of the additional items for this evening, if I'm not mistaken, listed on the most recent printed agenda, or do we need to add them to the agenda?
There's one item that needs to be added to the agenda.
And that would be?
That would be Resolution Number 64 regarding the police grant.
Alright. Do I need a motion? Do we need a motion to do that?
I think so.
Might as well, yeah. Okay. I will hear, I think you all been, yes, go ahead.
Do we need to do that now, or do we need to do that at the beginning of the public safety agenda? Because it's on public safety.
I think we can do it.
Okay.
So I make a motion to add Resolution 6420 to the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, council comments? Okay, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Arroyo?
Aye.
Ms. Bakay?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. Alright, that motion is hereby added to the agenda. Everybody, it looks like we've got an action-packed meeting this evening. We will begin with the, who, oh boy, we will begin with the Personnel Committee, Counselor Diaz.
Yes, I am going to start with motioning Elizabeth Bonto for the Historical Commission appointment. I do not know if she is available.
She's waiting to be heard, yes.
Okay, if you'd like to patch her in?
Hello, I was kind of cut off there for a minute or two, so. Did you, did you ask me to speak or anything yet?
Yes, I wanted to, first of all, so you can introduce yourself to all the council. So they kind of get a little bit of background of your impeccable letters you sent in, which I was very impressed, especially since you, you know, your parents were from New York and they did a lot of historical architecture there. And I'm kind of excited because I did visit the New York Public Library, since I lived in the Bronx, and also went to the Metropolitan Museum of Art. So if you'd like to add some addition to that?
Sure, so I think you know I'm a professor at Franklin and Marshall. I earned tenure in 2019, which frees me up to do things like this. I'm an environmental policy analyst and an environmental law specialist, but I grew up in a family that was very arts-oriented. My mother's an art historian, my father is an architect, my brother is in film and TV. So I have a passion for the arts and a real appreciation for historical architecture. I spent time living in the UK and in Canada, Washington DC, but I grew up in New York and, you know, I grew up in a family where my parents were very involved in historical preservation. My dad is a modern architect, but he worked a lot on projects where they were trying to maintain the historical integrity of buildings and doing renovations of older spaces, but maintaining some homage and respect for the heritage. So that's, that's my perspective on things. I did get a chance to sit in on last week's meeting, and I thought it was very interesting, and I was glad to have that opportunity. So thank you to Mr. Harris for alerting me to that and letting me sit in on it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the committee?
Elizabeth, I don't have any additional questions. Your, your background is impressive, and I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to do this. It's a volunteer position, and we're really lucky to have people that are dedicated and have the desire to serve in this way here in our city. So, and thank you for your time in coming here this evening, and I'm glad that you got to sit on a meeting already, so, and you didn't, and you still showed up here tonight too. That says a lot.
Thanks.
I do have a question, Ms. Counselor Diaz, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I just had a question. I really appreciate extensive background that you have. I think it's really important, kind of, not only in New York, but I also saw that you were Nova Scotia and the UK. They think that here in Lancaster, we definitely tried to bring in, for inspiration and tried to learn from other communities. One of the things that came up in our meeting, kind of, with the Historic Commission and HARP particularly, is, is kind of idea about how does cost efficiency and racial equity play a part in historic preservation? So I just wanted to kind of know your perspective of that and kind of what your thoughts are.
So I had an opportunity actually, earlier, when I first moved here, I lived on West Marion Street in a rental, and it was an older building, and one of my neighbors was building an addition, or was turning a garage into a house. So I sat in on the HARP board meeting back then, and it was interesting because that was my real introduction to the historical tensions in Lancaster between different socioeconomic communities and historic preservation. So I would be very cognizant of thinking about how do we balance what people are able to do and how can we help them in the right direction, you know, in this kind of an issue. My understanding is that the Historical Commission is much more focused on construction and demolition projects than these kinds of issues about, you know, am I allowed to put in vinyl windows, right? So that was a bit of a difference, but I know I am definitely cognizant of it because I've observed that, that creeping gentrification in Washington DC. And I lived in Dupont Circle, which was a fairly gentrified area, but I was on the outer edge of it near U Street, and you really could see a difference in, in how people, what the prices were like and how people were able to live, you know, and, and so I do think that's a primary consideration. I have a real respect for Lancaster and the work that's been going on here with historic preservation, but I'm not blind to the differences we see one block to the next. So I'm interested in learning more about it and how to help promote equity and fairness in the decisions that are being taken.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much again for volunteering. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the other council members?
Counselor Diaz, just more of a comment. Elizabeth, thanks for participating and serving in this capacity. I'm excited to just kind of see your perspective more as we go through this with your background in environmental policy, as well as incorporating that into, you know, historic preservation, as well as, you know, two very important things, but also finding that, that balance in this. So I'm excited to have your perspective on the board.
Thanks.
Any other questions from council? And I'll try, any questions from the public? Then if someone can second the motion?
Second.
Okay, I would like to take this to council, full council on December 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
And the next motion, I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna read them all, since these are all the appointments. So I'm gonna motion for nomination for Christina Deal to reappoint at the City Realization and Improvement Zoning Authority.
Second.
Along with Marshall Snively. And a nomination also with James Wagner for reappointment to the Downtown Investment District Authority, along with Reverend Timothy Mensah. The next nomination for reappointment is David Knight for Higher Education Authority. Nomination for Donald Maine for reappointment to the Historical Architectural Review Board, along with Amy Shapiro. Christopher Peters for reappointment in the Historical Commission, that's a reappointment as well, along with Steve Funk. And with Resolution 602020, it's a reappointment with Robert Schenk for zoning hearing board. And Resolution 602020, reappointment for Harvey Miller as the alternate for the zoning hearing board.
Actually, Ms. Diaz, can we do the resolutions as separate items? I think it'll be a little clearer for the record.
Then we'll, do you want me, okay, so we'll wait for the resolution. So do we have second for the motions then, for the reappointments, for the nominations?
Second that, Counselor Diaz.
And do we have any questions from the committee? Any questions from council? And I would like to then bring this to full council, then, December 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so let's do the Resolution then, number 602020, for the reappointment for Robert Schenk for the zoning hearing board. Motion?
Motion to send that to full council on December 8th.
Second.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one would be the Resolution for 612020, reappointment for Harvey Miller for the alternate for zoning hearing. I make that motion then.
Motion to move that to full council on December 8th.
All in favor for December 8th, full council?
Aye.
Aye.
And it looks like that is all I have. President, council. That's all we have for Personnel Committee today. Ishmael? Counselor? Did I lose everybody?
So, Counselor Diaz, I think we're waiting for President Ishmael.
Thank you.
And Bernie, did we get Robert Schenk's motion for that resolution?
Yes, we did.
Okay, just double checking, thank you.
And Counselors, just so you're aware, zoning hearing board under the municipality's planning code is one that is approved by resolution. So that's the only one we do a resolution, which is why we have those two resolutions. We'll have those resolutions on the agenda for the 8th.
Thank you Bernie. It's fun how they're all different, right?
They are all set up at different times by different rules. So President, we're moving to public safety.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I could not hear anything coming out of the, that's on me. Yeah, I will go ahead and open public safety. My apologies. Also, if I'm ever non-responsive for any reason, or if I get hit by a bus and Counselor Soto's not here, Counselor Bakay, just keep the thing moving. So yeah, Counselor Garcia Molina, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the time is 6:35, calling Public Safety Committee to open. We have two items on tonight's agenda, the one being the one that we most recently added, but the first one is Bill 1820, which is, I believe, going to be talked about by Captain Umstead, who's with us today?
Actually, it's gonna be Barry Handwerker.
Oh, is he with us?
Yeah, he's in the meeting. Captain Umstead is gonna address the grant resolution. And there's Barry.
Well, so I'd like to make a motion for Bill Number 182020, amending the length of the police officer's probationary period to two years, which Barry will speak to.
Good evening, Counselors, how are you?
How are you doing?
Good.
Good. So what you have before you tonight is a rather simple ordinance. It really makes a one change, one word change to Section 67-10, Subpart B, Parenz 1 of our code. Getting into details, the code section there deals with when officers go stay on probation. This is for initial hires into the police department. Currently, it's one year from the date they complete their training or the academy, or if they already have their completion of that at the time they're hired, one year from the date of their hire. So for reference, we currently have a two-year probation period for promotions. This ordinance is to change the probation period for new hires from one year to two years. There are a multitude of reasons for doing that, not the least of which is to make them consistent, but maybe the most important of which is to be able to give the command staff the time to see the officers in all relevant situations to make the determination as to whether they should become a permanent contractually tenured member of our police department. So this enables us to do a lot of what you can't do in the background, which is to really learn about somebody before being committed to them for very long periods of time.
I personally don't have any questions. Counselor Diaz, do you have any questions? Rest of council?
No.
If I could just add one item to what Barry talked about, this is because this affects the terms and conditions of employment for our police officers. We did have a meeting with Police Association President a couple of weeks ago, discussed this matter with him. He, they, he and they had no concerns, raised no issues with it, and were supportive of it going forward.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to bring Bill number 1820 to the full council on December 8th.
Second.
Thank you. I apologize, Counsel Craig, about earlier. You're with me. So the next agenda item that we have is Resolution 6420, which was recently added. And with us, we have Captain Umstead to explain to us about the grant application.
Mr. Garcia Molina, was that approved?
Yeah, I don't remember there being a vote.
Motion to approve.
And there was a motion and a second.
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Did we lose? Okay, great. So Captain Umstead, could you tell us a little bit about the grant application?
Can we have a, can we have a vote to approve?
Okay, so we need a motion to approve.
No, we have a motion. We have a second.
We need a vote. Just kidding. Counselor Craig? Are you in? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. So now we will move on to Resolution 6420. And with us, we have Captain Umstead, which I believe Captain Umstead, this is the right time for you to talk if I did all my parts right.
All right, good evening, everybody. Yeah, it's always a good day when you find $25,000. This grant is through Keystone Communities Program and it's actually something that Chief Bergeheiser had been in conversation with Senator Scott Martin about a while ago. And we had been looking at a couple of different options of how to spend this money if we were qualified for this grant. I reached out to Senator Martin's office last week. They just got back to me today. One of the ideas we were tossing around was upgrades to our Emergency Operations Center on the fourth floor of the police station. The EOC, as we call it, it's actually a dual-purpose room that we use for training, in-house trainings and presentations. We also use it, well, pre-COVID, we used it for our use-of-force training, our hands-on training. We would put wrestling mats down and use that room for that. And it serves as our command center during major events. Some of the technological deficiencies of that room became glaringly apparent during the recent protests. And it's in dire need of some upgrades. The equipment in there, some of it is from 17 years ago when we moved into the building. There's an old Sony 40-inch TV that's about as deep as it is wide. It probably weighs about 300 pounds. And I don't, you probably could plug a VCR into it, but definitely not a computer. So about a month or so ago, Ryan Hunter, the Facilities Director, and I went through that and came up with some ideas and a company called B&amp;B Integrations came in and did some, gave us some quotes and the quote came to, I believe, with everything, all the bells and whistles, installing two large LCD flat-screen TVs, all the hardware, all the wiring, updating the audio system for that room, because that's horrible, to $29,149. The grant is for $25,000. We will be able to find some money left over in the budget to cover the difference. So we are planning to submit that as our grant request to fund the upgrades to the EOC room.
Great. Thank you, Captain. So the grant application, this one will be with funds coming into this year, or is it funds coming into next year?
I believe that it sounds like this, the money's available now. With most grants, you usually have a grace period of a couple of years to actually spend that. I was, shout out to Patrick and Bernie and Megan Blackman for this happening so fast. I just sent this to them today. I wasn't really expecting this to be on tonight's agenda, so it's great that we got this rolling. And if this goes through, I'll reach out to them tomorrow to see what our next steps are and what we need to do to finalize this.
There's typically a one or a two-year grant period. Maybe for one that's this small, it's probably a year. You wouldn't, you won't end up seeing this come through the general fund because we'd set up the grant separately and whatever match requirement there might be or the additional funds from the police bureau's budget will, you know, will be the only expenditure that would end up hitting the general fund.
Got it. Thank you. Hopefully it goes through. 17 years is in need of quite an upgrade. I appreciate it. I'm glad that we could get this through quickly. So do you have any questions, Counsel Craig?
I don't.
Any questions from council as a whole? So I'd like to make a motion to move Resolution 6420 to full council for December 8th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And with that, that is the end of public safety, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia Molina. That brings us to the Finance Committee, I believe. Counselor Bakay.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so we've got a couple of items on the agenda tonight. Do we want to go in order in which they appear? Patrick, are you okay with presenting on the budget first?
Yeah, so the budget presentation that I have is one that you all, and I'm sure the throngs of people who are viewing this online are used to seeing. So it really covers all of the items that are on here except
Many pie charts are on it, Patrick.
Except for Resolution Number 59, which is the amendment for the capital improvement plan. So the first four items on here are budget-related. I'm happy to take the capital improvement plan one first, if you want to do that, or just wait till the end.
You can wait until the end of that. I'll let you go ahead. And how many pie charts appear in this PowerPoint this evening, Patrick?
I didn't count, but it's, don't worry, it's okay.
All right, I will turn the floor over to you then.
All right, thank you. So I will get my screen share up and okay, so you should see the cover page of the presentation. Let me figure out where I can move these darn controls so I can actually see my screen. Okay. Okay, so thanks very much, Counselor Bakay and other members of council. I want to, with this presentation, give a 30,000, 50,000-foot view of what's going on in the budget that you've been presented. The, on Saturday, the Saturday meetings with the department directors is when you'll get the much deeper dive into individual department budgets. The concept of this presentation is just to give you a broad overview of the issues, the larger issues that we were dealing with in putting this budget together. You know, of course, not the least of which is COVID-19 and the economic impacts that we've seen from it. So the highlights from this 2021 budget are really the only place where I'm gonna talk about, primarily about the enterprise funds. Most of the budget presentation is talking about just the general fund. But when we get to issues related to any of the other enterprise funds, I'll let you know sort of what the distinction is. So for the general funds, the budget as proposed has no real estate tax increase. So the military rate would remain at 11.7 mils. So the Bill Number 17, which is the real estate tax rate, is just the, essentially the exact same bill as last year with a budget, except for the due dates for the tax, or the tax payments and the installment payments. We are definitely seeing both in 2020 and also in 2021, a, an impact on the earned income and the local services tax revenues. And that is just flat out due to the economic impact of COVID-19. A bright spot is real estate transfer tax revenues, which have remained strong. Those of you who joined me Sunday morning and look at the deed transfers in the newspaper, see that, you know, there's a high volume of real estate sales. The price of sales, especially with residential properties in the city, has remained strong, which means that, you know, the combination of the volume and the cost of real estate sales has meant that, you know, our real estate transfer tax revenues have been pretty strong. We're gonna begin the full HUDLE grant project implementation. This was originally planned for 2020 for obvious reasons. Grant, you know, ramping up staffing and everything just was not happening during this year. So you'll see the full implementation of that and I'll talk a little bit later about some of the revenue and expense implications of that. And then finally, we're gonna finalize the PPL streetlight purchase. Ultimately, this is gonna save us around $450,000 a year. We think that closing may actually happen by the end of 2020 now. It seems like PPL has moved up their timetable on that. So if we, if we do actually finalize that purchase in 2020, it's gonna result in some additional savings in the, in 2021 versus what we have in the budget right now. So we tried to be conservative with when that closing would happen. And again, Steve can talk about this. Steve Campbell can talk about this during his presentation also on Saturday. With the Stormwater Management Fund, we have in here a proposal for a $3 per thousand square foot of impervious area increase in the stormwater management fee. I've got some slides later on to talk about what the residential impacts from that will be. And really, this is driven by continued work on green infrastructure to come into EPA compliance with a consent decree for the combined sewer overflow issue. In the sewer fund, we're proposing no sewer rate increase. We had a rate increase in 2020 for inside-city customers and also had the approval of, from the Public Utility Commission, of a rate increase for outside-city customers. So there's no proposed rate increase for 2021. But we're gonna continue with a significant number of, you know, planning and also project implementation for EPA consent decree compliance there. And you all have been in the discussion about the Penn Vest loan that we just finalized at the last council meeting for additional plant and system improvements that will, you know, are also in pursuit of that EPA compliance. In the water funds, we originally had planned a public utility rate case in 2020 that we would have hoped that that would come into play in early 2021 with additional revenues. For reasons of COVID and a number of other things, we did not pursue that in 2020. So that moves into 2021 and in all likelihood, probably won't happen until at least the middle of the year in 2021. One of the other complicating factors among COVID and everything else is that the attorney that was our counsel for all PUC-related matters tragically died in a car crash about a month and a half ago. And so we're also in need of, you know, new counsel to represent us in PUC matters. So we have a lead on good counsel for that, but that's, you know, that's just been another 2020, you know, tragedy thrown at us. And then also on the water fund, you know, we've got continuing ongoing capital improvements. The Large Diagonal Main Project is ongoing now and the South Tank, which is the new water tower on Millersville Pike on the school district property, that is underway and will continue in 2021. One of the things I want to point out about the, the lack of a rate increase from the Public Utility Commission when we originally planned it, is that there's obviously a significant revenue impact for that in 2021. And we can talk about this more on Saturday, but we had we had planned our debt service in the water fund to have a, there's a $2 million increase in debt service in the water fund in 2021. And that was all planned around the idea that we were going for a rate increase for outside-city customers. We would have that revenue from that rate increase in time for that increase in debt service. So one of the things you'll see in the summary pages in the water fund budget is a fairly significant use of reserves, a deficit in the water fund, and it's strictly tied to the timing of that PUC rating increase. And then in the solid waste and recycling funds, we have proposed a rate increase of $32 a year for all customers. And I've got a slide here later on to talk about the impact of that and why that rate increase is necessary. It's all really driven by the new hauler contract that went into effect in October of 2020, so just a couple of months ago. And that was through a competitive bidding process that we had that finalized in, I guess we opened those bids in August. And then the other impact is on the recycling rule changes. So just the whole upheaval on the recycling market has had a, an impact on not just what things can be recycled, but also the cost of recycling. And again, I'll, I have a slide later on to show that impact. So when we look at all of the budgets together, the general fund, the four enterprise funds, Stormwater Management Sewer Fund, Water Fund and Solid Waste and Recycling, the entire 2021 budget is 128,642,000. Of that, 50% is the general fund. And again, that's the part of this budget that I'm gonna talk mostly about today. Those pieces of the pie that you see there, if you compare this to the 2020, the 2019 budget, are pretty static. The size of the water fund has grown a little bit faster than the other funds and that's really a reflection of the debt service costs that we have in the water fund for improvements that we continue to make to the system. So now I'm gonna concentrate primarily on the general fund. This is just a snapshot of not department by department, but a breakdown of the four main components of our costs, which are employee salaries, employee benefits, our operating costs, and then debt service. And you can see the similarities between 2020 and 2021. You know, benefit, salaries and benefits are typically in those same ranges, 46% now for salaries and 31% for benefits. Again, if you took one of these slides from a presentation 10 years ago, those numbers would be pretty close to the same. Debt service has remained at a little below or a little above 8% year after year in our budgets and it it remains in that place for 2021. And then our operating expenses, you can see that the percentage, the, both the dollar amount and also the percentage amount of the budget has actually dropped from 2020 to 2021. And part of that is, is an effort that was made in Public Works and a little bit in the police bureau to move costs from the operating budget into the capital budget. Really as a, some of it is a, just a straight-up budgetary savings in 2021 for the general fund and some of it is really to better reflect, you know, capital investments that are long-term investments should be paid Really to better reflect, you know, capital investments that are long term investments should be paid for with dollars that. The the impact of those borrowings is going to impact taxpayers over the longer term. So and then the other thing I just wanted to point out is in terms of the growth in the general fund budget. The growth from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one is at two point nine six percent. I I went out to two decimal places, mostly because getting under three percent was an important milestone for us. And I'll talk a little bit later about. The use of reserves or the deficit that is built into this budget and where it was. At the beginning of the budget process, because we've done a significant amount of modifications, both on the revenue side and also on the expense side, more importantly. To bring the budget into the line of sort of where where we've been historically, which is about a two and a half or three percent increase. In the overall cost in the general fund. So on to just some highlights on the general funds in terms of revenues. So this is looking at all general fund revenues and the source of those revenues. So you can see real estate taxes are now at forty seven percent of the general fund budget. Last year they were forty nine or fifty percent, and they have been in that range typically year after year. Pilots are at, which is payment and lieu of taxes, about three percent of the the general fund budget. So that is. Real estate related, but it's not strictly real estate tax revenue. And then these other pieces of the pie honestly are pretty similar to prior years. I wanted to point out in the grant revenue side, you know, I talked about the. The HUDLED grant implementation coming into full play in twenty twenty one. There is a, there is a lot of staff that comes along with that. There's additional staff that is in the community planning and economic development budget. And at the same time, so there's additional cost to implement the LED grant implementation. What we see on the revenue side is a drawdown of funds from that HUDLED grant to support those general funds costs. And Chris Delfts will dig into this a little bit more in his Saturday presentation, but the combination of. The additional funds from the HUDLED grant and also some. Additional allocation of costs to the community development block grant funding is going to bring in an additional seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Into the general fund to support those operations in twenty twenty one. So that's the positive side of things. The negative side of things is that we got a. Bad news at the end of September, when we learned what our state aid number was going to be for the pension plans. In twenty twenty, and it was a three point eight percent drop. We had on an annual basis been seeing between three and four percent increases in the state aid year after year for the last four or five years. And without any sort of preamble or announcement. We got our state aid allocation at the end of September and it reflected a three point eight percent reduction. So that in the general fund, and that affects all of the funds, but in the general fund, which is where the biggest cost is for our pensions, it's primarily related to police and fire. That amounted to about a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar loss in revenues in twenty twenty. And we are for twenty twenty one purposes, we're just planning on a flat. No increase or no reduction in the state aid for the pension plans. Hopefully, the no reduction part is, you know, comes into play. If there is a small increase, that will be a benefit and help to reduce the deficit for twenty twenty one. And then the last piece is just, I want to highlight this very bright red piece of the pie. Which is the use of reserves or deficit that we have budgeted for twenty twenty one. Of just under five million dollars, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the five year projection and show you kind of how that impacts. Not just twenty twenty one, but how, you know, that that flows forward into future years. Another COVID impact is the earn income tax revenues. I talked about this earlier on the highlights, but this just gives you a. Quick snapshot of earn income tax revenues. And as a reminder, earn income tax revenues are paid. Only by residents of the city. So if you work outside, if you live outside of the city and work in the city, which. Close to thirty thousand people do. There is no earned income tax revenue from any of those residents. It's only people who actually live in the city who are paying the earned income tax. So back earlier in the summer, late spring. Our initial. I'll call it sort of sky is falling. Projection was that we were going to see as much as a twenty five or thirty percent reduction in our income tax revenues in twenty twenty. Just because we had no idea what the, you know, full impact of COVID was going to be. That was before federal stimulus was rolling out. The good news is that we're only seeing about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Loss versus the budget in twenty twenty. The bad news of that is that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm not projecting a full recovery in twenty twenty one because, you know, that's. One of the great unknowns, right, is how long is the COVID economic impact going to be? The first question that we had was how deep is it going to be? And now it seems like it is the impact for earned income taxes is nowhere near what we originally projected, which is the good news. Now it's just a matter of how long are we going to see an economic impact? Our numbers through November show that, you know, this number is actually on, we just got our November allocation. Yesterday, I think it was, and it was actually a little bit higher by about fifty thousand dollars than the allocation in twenty nineteen. So again, that's the the good news piece. Bad news, it's still down. So I talked about one of the bright spots being real estate transfer tax revenues. This is a look at those revenues since two thousand and eleven, which was really like two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven was the low point coming out of the Great Recession. And you can see the nice uptick there since the the two thousand and eleven. Two thousand and eighteen was a special year just because Park City sold, and that was a. Sale of a hundred and sixty eight million dollar property. Which brought in nine hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. Park City sells every single year. That would be great, but that's not going to happen. So that was sort of an anomaly year, but since then. We've been in the million three, million two range, you know, and that's where we're projecting two thousand twenty one. And this was a. One of the other areas where we did not know, you know, with COVID and the economic impact, are real estate sales just going to halt completely? Are they going to dry up or what's going to happen? And that really, you know, that has not happened. There were pretty much no real estate sales. In April, June, May, and then things really started to pick up again. So. From what we've gotten in the last two months of the year. Over the last several years, this million two number that's projected is actually what was in the budget. So looks like we'll we'll hit our number. And because of a few large transactions that we anticipate next year. Related to the UPMC projects, the LGH Hankin Group project and a few others. We're anticipating a little bit of an uptick from the prior year from twenty twenty. So that's the revenue side of things. On the expense side, two major drivers are medical and pensions. So this is a look at medical expenses, and this is one of those areas where I'm I'm not just looking at the general funds. Expenses, but this is all funds all all combined. So in twenty twelve, that was the year that we went fully insured. We had a spend of about ten point seven million dollars. In two thousand and twenty, where we where I'm projecting we're going to end up, and this is after. Reviewing all of our claims through October. Is about twelve point seven million dollars. So it's a two million dollar increase. But the good news is that over that time, if you look at this on an average year over year, we've had less than a three percent increase in all our all in medical spend. You know, since two thousand and twelve, since we went self insured. Early on, I was doing comparisons to what we would have expected in premium increases, and I I I stopped that after a few years, but I can. Assure you that if we were still on a fully insured plan. We would be paying premium increases that were significantly above just three percent a year, actually a little bit below three percent a year. So. That has definitely been a a money saver for us. It was a more significant money saver early on, but it has still continued to be a good move that we made. And then in twenty twenty one, and this is one of the items that the mayor addressed in her budget address last week was. The. While we don't get, we don't pay a premium, we do get from. Capital Blue Cross, what's called a Cobra equivalent rate. So it's what we would be paying. In a premium if we were fully insured. And our preferred provider or PPO rate was about a fourteen percent increase. And our high deductible health plan was about a seven percent increase. And that's really driven by an expectation of medical inflation, and almost all of that is driven by COVID impact. You know, the medical system throughout the entire country has been financially impacted, you know, in huge ways by. COVID, by hospitalizations and all that sort of thing. So. We're not anticipating that we're going to see that big of an increase in our actual claims. You know, we continue to work on wellness incentives. We continue to, you know, provide incentives, financial incentives for employees to move to the high deductible health plan. So, but even so, we're looking at about a thirteen point one million dollar all in spend. In twenty twenty one. And then I put this over here on the side, just sort of where where the money comes for all those claims. And the breakdown is about ninety five percent is coming from. Call it city contributions, but because this is general fund, it's not just taxpayers, right? It's our. Water rate payers, it's our sewer rate payers, solid waste and recycling and stormwater payers. So those contributions are about ninety five percent of what covers our our costs. Employee and retiree contributions are about five percent. That seems like an enormous imbalance, ninety five to five. But. When I started doing these budget presentations. Police officers paid nothing for medical insurance. Firefighters paid, I think it was seven dollars and fifty cents. Biweekly for medical insurance. After many employees were in the same position. And non bargaining employees were in pretty much the same position. So we've gone from basically zero percent to five percent over about a fifteen year period. And that really is a matter of cycling through labor contracts. Now, the uniform personnel, police and fire are paying close to ten percent of their, but their. Premium would be. So there has been pretty significant change in that, but it's still, it's very different than what happens in the private sector. The other big cost driver is pension obligations, and now I'm backing away from all funds, and this is just looking at the general fund. We pay what's called a municipal minimum municipal obligation, and it's a calculation of the the amount of funds that. We have to deposit into the police pension plan, the fire pension plan, and the non uniform pension plan. On an annual basis to meet the actuarial requirements of the plan and that the there is. A huge amount that goes into the that calculation, but essentially what it is trying to do is it's it's a state mandate to move. Municipal pension plans to fully funded status. And that is a. The the cost drivers obviously are, you know, the number of employees who are retiring. But it's also the number of employees that we have employed now and are going to retire in the future. The. A fully funded pension plan isn't just that there are funds available to pay current retirees. It also means that in the future, there are going to be funds there to pay retire somebody who's just got employed yesterday. And is going to retire twenty or twenty five or thirty years down the road. So we are, in general, our pension plans are in good shape. We're close to eighty percent funded when you look at the three of them together. But the state mandate is that we get to a hundred percent over a period of time. The result of that is about an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in our pension obligations. In an increase from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. As you can see from this chart, it's really driven primarily by the police pension plan. But there's also somewhat of an increase in fire and also in the non uniform pension plan, which is the the green shaded bar here. The other thing to point out here is that the state pension aid that we receive. Over the last several years has been about forty percent of the total cost. Back in two thousand and six, it was almost a hundred percent of the total cost that we had for MMO. So. There's a much more significant amount of funds coming from the general fund from city taxpayers for these pension obligations. And because of that drop in the state aid in twenty twenty, that state aid portion is actually now about thirty seven percent. So it's moving in the wrong direction. There you'll see that there's sort of like an every two year kind of aspects to the increases. And that's because the actuarial calculation is done every two years. One of the things that hit us for the twenty twenty one. MMO was that at the very tail end of twenty eighteen, there was a huge drop in the market. The market dropped and now it came back in early in the year, but the actuarial valuation is a snapshot in a moment in time. And our bad luck was that moment in time was December thirty first, twenty eighteen. And so the market drop that resulted at the very end of eighteen had. Had a financial impact on what we're now going to be paying in twenty twenty one. So yesterday's news ends up becoming tomorrow's problem sometimes. So that's through general funds. Now I want to just brief briefly touch on stormwater and solid waste and recycling fees and. And what those impacts are for what we've proposed in the twenty one budget. So for the stormwater management fee, as I said, it proposed budget includes an increase of three dollars per thousand square feet of impervious area. There are a lot of numbers on this page that I'm not going to go through. Really, the one I want to talk about here is what the actual impact of that is. So for the average residential property owner, they are in either tier one or tier two for stormwater management. And those tiers are based on the amount of impervious area on their individual property. For. The vast majority of those property owners, what they're going to see is either a dollar fifty per year increase or a four dollar and fifty. Four dollar and fifty cent increase for the entire year. Where, and I'll show you this in the next slide, but where most of the the burden of that stormwater management fee is. It lies on property owners that have significant property with impervious areas, those with large parking lots. And other, you know, paved areas where stormwater flow is, you know, stormwater flow into our system is impacted. So all in the that increase in the stormwater management fee raises an additional about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. In new revenue for stormwater management fund. That primarily is going to go to, like I talked about earlier, the cost of EPA compliance. There's some increases in professional services. That we have for engineering and other fees related to consent decree. There's some landscaping fee increases for tree planting and things like that, but all really geared toward, you know, removing stormwater from the stormwater management. From the combined sewer system. This is then just another look at those tiers. Like I said, about eighty percent of the city property owners pay. Either at tier one or tier two rates. So that's this part of the pie here. So they make up, those property owners make up eighty percent of the the total of property owners. But when you look at where the. Primary revenue from the fee, the stormwater management fee comes from, it comes from those tier two property owners. Who represent about seventy six percent of all the impervious area in the city. And the the whole concept of the stormwater management fee is that the fairest way to implement it is based on impervious area. So if your property has a lot of, is very large. Has a lot of impervious surface, that produces stormwater into the combined sewer system. Those property owners should pay more in the fee than residential property owners primarily who have, you know, backyards where with impervious area. Then on to the solid waste and recycling fee increase. So these numbers are on the right here are from Mike Devaney. This is really the cost drivers for the the increase that we have proposed in the budget. So. The increase that's proposed is thirty two dollars per year. So that breaks down to an increase of eight dollars per quarter. The, as you see in the resolution that's related to this, the twenty percent senior discount will still apply. So that discount will apply to the two hundred and seventy two dollar annual fee. The the breakdown of the hauler fee, or I'm sorry, of the of the solid waste from recycling fee. Really is impacted primarily. really is impacted primarily by this top part, the hauler fee. So in the, um, the contract bidding that was done earlier this year, uh, the hauler fee increased by, you know, close to $25. And in talking to Mike Devaney, the majority of that is their labor costs. Um, they've seen the increase in, in labor. One of the things I know as a driver is, um, no pun intended, CDL drivers, um, who are the ones who drive the trucks. Um, there is huge competition for CDL drivers, uh, for, you know, everybody's getting everything delivered now. Um, so that's a, that's a cost driver for the, for the haulers. Um, fuel costs are not a huge driver in that calculation, but they were certainly there. Um, but that $25 increase is the majority of the residential, uh, rate increase that we're seeing. Um, the other piece is on recycling, uh, like talked earlier about the, you know, the impact on the recycling market. Um, the end of just shipping everything to China, um, has caused all sorts of upheaval. Uh, and it's meant a, an increase in the processing fee for recyclables that went from $60 a ton earlier this year and is now going up to $65 a ton. And then finally, uh, the Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Authority has, um, announced an increase in their tipping fee, which is what the haulers pay uh, in taking trash to the transfer station, uh, and that's moving from $81 a ton to $82 a ton. Um, so those three things again, combined are really what, uh, drive the, the proposed increase in the, uh, residential unit fee. When I go back and look at, um, the rates that we had when we first implemented the single hauler system back in October of 2006, the residential rate at that time was $200, uh, and the senior discount applied to that rate. So between 2006 and now 2021, the increase has been $72 a year. Um, this, because the fee will be, would be 272, uh, in 2021. If you break that down on an annual basis over that 14-year period, it's about a 2.6% increase on an annual basis. So we had a long string of years where there was no rate increase at all. And then issues with, uh, new contract haulers, uh, and, you know, the, the cost for tipping and recycling market have really driven that rate up. But when you look at it on an annual basis, it's, it's been below that, um, that 3% mark that I talked about earlier. Okay, so five-year projection. Um, this is, uh, for, again, for the throngs who are reviewing this, uh, on YouTube. This is a, uh, review that we do each year, uh, because only looking at an individual year's budget doesn't really give you a full picture of what's going on. It gives you an idea of what is intended to be raised and spent in that year, but not of what the, the sort of flow is over a period of years. And what happens when we make a decision in one year and how that, uh, results in changes over a period of five years. So, uh, this is a, um, is running from 2019. So these are the audited figures for 2019. The 2020 budget, the 2020 projections, so where we project to end up, uh, at the end of 2020, the proposed budget, and then an additional, uh, four years of projections out through 2025. So at the end of 2019, uh, the audited figure showed that we ended with a surplus of about $1.5 million and a general fund fund balance of about $15.4 million. When we, uh, when city council adopted the 2020 budget, that included a use of reserves of about 2.9, just under $3 million, um, which would have taken our reserve balance down to about 12.4 million. In a normal year with no COVID, um, I think we could have either fully eliminated that, uh, use of reserves or come very close to it. Uh, because we've typically been, um, you know, fairly conservative on our revenue estimates. And we're always looking for ways during the year to find savings. We hold positions vacant, um, and a number of other things that we can do during the year to save money. Um, we can bring the, uh, a use of reserves down. Even in the COVID year, um, where we see what's actually a, um, about a 3.7% revenue loss compared to 2019. And that's due to those, you know, not just earned income taxes, but a few other, uh, revenues. Even in the year where we see that 3.7% revenue loss, we're still going to be able to reduce, uh, the use of reserves in 2020 by about $500,000 or $600,000. And where that comes from really is in the savings on the expense side of things. So we had a, a total expenditure budget of $62.7 million. And we're looking to come in, uh, at the end of 2020 with a, a spend of about $60.7 million. So almost a $2 million, uh, under budget on our expense side. And that was driven by all of the usual things, keeping positions open, finding operational efficiencies during the year. But it was also significantly aided by the furloughs that we did, uh, early in the year, uh, at the end of April, uh, that impacted about 10% of the city workforce. And the majority of that workforce was in the general fund. So our estimate on the net savings when we calculate the unemployment compensation, uh, uh, expenses that we'll have versus the salary savings that we, uh, had is about $500,000. So between $500,000 and $600,000 of savings. Um, it was very difficult for the individual employees. We made every effort that we could to make sure that we were mitigating the impact on them. Um, we maintained full benefits for all full-time employees who were on furlough. Um, we, um, we did a lot of calculations to determine the impact on employees of their loss of their city pay versus the unemployment compensation that they were going to get with the additional $600 a week benefit that came with the, uh, CARES Act. And that additional $600 benefit was significant for those employees who were impacted by the furlough. Um, there, I could do a whole presentation on the unemployment compensation system and how long it took for many of our employees to actually start receiving their benefits. Um, but that was not, that was not a city issue. That was really a system issue that was just completely overloaded. Um, but in, in total, you know, we were able to maintain all those employees on city benefits, but at the same time, uh, reduce our overall salary spend by between $500,000 and $600,000 during the year. So the, where we project to end, uh, 2020 is about a 2.3, 2.4 million dollar, uh, use of reserves, which will bring our fund balance down to a little over $13 million. Compared to the general fund expenditures, that's still about a 21% reserve, which in the regular world is a very healthy reserve. Certainly when you compare us to other, uh, cities across Pennsylvania, we're, we're in good shape with that reserve. Then with the 2021 budget, um, we're dealing with a, still a revenue loss. So about a 0.2% revenue loss versus what we originally projected in the 2020 budget. Um, so, you know, a, a revenue loss. And then, uh, about that 3%, just under 3% increase in our expenditures, we would have a use of reserves of about 4.9, just under $5 million. Um, I talked earlier about, um, how that sort of keeping our, the increase in the budget under 3% was one of the lines that we were shooting for. Um, the other line was keeping the use of reserves under $5 million. When we started the budget process for 2021, that number was closer to, it was actually a little bit over $8 million. Um, so the, through a combination of, uh, you know, better look at our, uh, our revenues, um, really digging in, uh, and credit to, uh, CPED staff and also staff in the accounting office for digging into, um, the, uh, lead grant and the, the CDBG funding and, and figuring out where we could bring in additional revenues there. And then really department by department, uh, every single department digging deep in their budgets and figuring out where can they find additional cost savings, uh, for 2021. That's what resulted in, in, and I have to put this in air quotes, in only using 4.9 million dollars of reserves to balance this budget. Um, that's still a huge amount, uh, uh, of reserves. Like I said earlier, it's about 8% of the, um, of the overall general fund budget. But it's needed in this year, um, you know, the mayor had made the pledge earlier on this year that, uh, due to the economic impact of COVID across, you know, all demographics, um, we wanted to hold the line on real estate taxes and we're doing that in this budget. Um, that said, if we would have this entire use of reserves, our fund balance would now be down to just a little over $8 million. So that's about a 12 and a half percent reserve, which is essentially cutting our reserve in half just since the end of 2019. So we'd go from about a 26% reserve down to about a 12 and a half percent reserve. And then when you look at the, the outer years, the projections from 2022 to 2025, um, this is one, it's assuming there's no change in the real estate mileage for any of these years, right? So holding real estate taxes steady for each year. When the COVID impact is gone and we see normal economic activity, we see around a 1% increase in revenues on a annual basis. And that's from increases in real estate transfer taxes and earned income tax revenues and some other, uh, smaller sources of revenue. And at the same time, we see about a 2.5% increase in our expenses. And that is primarily driven by salaries and benefits, which make up about 80% of the general fund budget. So that difference between about a 1% increase in, in naturally growing revenues and a 2.5 to 3% increase in our expenses is what drives our, uh, structural deficit. And it's what, if we did nothing, if we didn't do anything on the revenue side and we don't do anything on the expense side, would end up resulting in about a $6.1 million deficit in 2022, bringing our reserve down to about 3%. And then in the outer years, growing deficits and, uh, really going negative, right? Which is a situation that we can't be in. Um, if I go back in the time machine to this same presentation for the 2007 budget, five years out, we're at about a $22 million. Um, we've gotten where we are with a significant reserve at the end of 2019 through a combination of primarily property tax increases and also holding the line, you know, doing things like bond refinancings, um, going self-insured, trying to, you know, maintain, uh, salary levels at a, you know, so that employees see growth in their salaries, but we're not, um, you know, we're not overspending on the salary side of things. All of those things combined is what has resulted where we are. Um, this is always a presentation about, uh, this five-year projection, a presentation about where we can't go. Um, and the, and just to give a sense of, uh, the, of the scope of the issues that we have to deal with to maintain a sustainable city, a sustainable budget and, you know, continuing to provide vital services to, to city residents.
Question, Patrick, before you move on.
Sure, go ahead.
With the last slide, what drove police services revenues to be so much higher than what's going to be proposed for the following years?
Um, the, the, there, well, the biggest part of that is the, uh, school resource officer program. Um, so that's about a $650,000, uh, revenue line item, if, if it's in place for the entire year. Um, we've not had the school resource officer program in place. You know, we basically had it in place for the first, um, not really even the first two quarters, but the school district paid for the first two quarters of 2020. Um, we're going to have no revenue coming in for the second half of 2020 and anticipating that, you know, um, knock on wood and everything else, that we'd go back to full immobilization, uh, in the 2021, 22 school, uh, school year. I know the mayor's had some conversations with Dr. Rao about that, and that is everybody's anticipation. Um, but, you know, obviously a lot of unknowns, uh, to go along with that.
Okay.
So, um, this is just pulling out, uh, a, a look at the, the general fund, fund balance reserves, uh, from 2008 up through, uh, where we projected in, uh, the 2021 budget. Um, and I, you know, said earlier about, you know, part of the reason that we've been able to build up a reserve, um, while we're continuing to maintain services is that we've done real estate tax increases. Um, and so what I've marked here in these white arrows is, is, uh, where you see one of these is when we had a real estate tax increase during that year and then what percentage increase that was. Um, so, you know, we had a range of, um, well, and, and you really see here, this dip down, the impact of the great recession. Um, well, that really began in 2008, where it really started hitting our revenues was in 2010. Um, we, in 2008, we had like a million dollars a year just in investment income, uh, in the general fund. And that basically went to zero in 2010. Um, so we did, uh, there were increases of 4% in 2008, 5% in 2009. And then this was the most significant one, a 25% increase in property taxes in 2010. Um, that increase had to offset massive revenue losses in earned income tax, real estate transfer taxes, all sorts of things. And that carried us through a few years and we were able to start building up the reserve again. Um, 2013, 15, 17 and 19, again, all tax increases in those years. Uh, and in all but one of those years, we saw a bit of a surplus so we could continue to build up, uh, the reserve. And, um, you know, we built up a reserve not just to be a nice number on a spreadsheet, right? We built up a reserve because we knew somewhere along the way, something is going to happen. There's either going to be another economic, uh, downturn or something else, some extraordinary cost that we were going to incur. Um, clearly nobody anticipated in building up a reserve over 10-year period that we were going to deal with a global pandemic, but, um, it, it's 2020, so here we are. Um, and, uh, it makes sense in the context of the 21 budget to use some of that reserve, uh, to offset what would otherwise either be an enormous reduction in city services, because we'd have to reduce staff significantly or a significant tax increase at a time when businesses and property owners are just trying to recover from what's been going on this year. Um, so like I said earlier, um, at the end of 2020, we projected the, the fund balance would come down to about $13 million. Uh, and then by the end of 2021, about $8 million. With that said, um, there is no way that we were going to allow an actual use of reserves in 2021 of 4.9 million dollars. Um, in, uh, several weeks ago, when we were still finalizing the budget, I did the, uh, presentation similar to this to the city leadership team. So department directors, managers, supervisors across all departments. Um, the first challenge that we put to them was that we were looking for an additional quarter million dollars of reductions in expenses, um, in the 21 budget, because we needed to get under that 3% uh, place in, in terms of cost increases. Um, everybody came through, we had reductions in police, in fire, in administrative services, in CPED and in public works. And there were a combination of different things. Some were, you know, we got a grant for, uh, radios in the police bureau. So we were able to move dollars from, uh, the, the general fund to one year of the, the lease for the new radios in the police bureau to that grant. Uh, in the fire bureau, they were able to delay, uh, some positions. In CPED, it was delaying hiring and, uh, moving some professional services cost out of the general fund. In public works, it was some delayed hiring and moving some other things to the capital budget. So everybody came through with those, uh, reductions. The second challenge that was put to everybody is identify either new revenue sources, uh, which you all know we're very limited on in terms of what the third-class city code allows us to do. So new revenue sources or cost savings during the year, um, to cut the 21 budget uh, deficit by at least 2.5 million. So basically cutting it by 50% during the year. Um, one of the things that you'll see in the, uh, and I'll talk about this on Saturday, uh, we have a fee study, the cost of a fee study built into the 21 budget. Um, and that fee study would look comprehensively across the entire city and look at, um, specialized services that we provide, whether that's building permits, inspection fees, anything like that. Um, where general taxpayers shouldn't be paying that cost. It should be the person who's getting the specialized service. Um, so that we're recovering those actual costs. So they dig deep into how long does it take a particular inspection to happen? How many times does an inspector have to go out, back out to a property or a job site? How many times does an inspector have to go out, back out to a property or a job site? Um, so they look at all that and the loaded rate with benefits and everything and determine what the fees should be set at. Um, what that would result in is us coming back to city council then with a comprehensive uh change in fees, so it'd be a resolution coming to city council to basically change the entire fee table for the city uh for those fees where it makes sense uh to increase them. So that's one revenue option. Um, with the incoming Biden administration, there's been more discussion about uh federal assistance to state and local governments being part of any uh coming stimulus that may come from the federal government. Um, so I've added that to the list of, you know, that's an option for deficit reduction, just uh straight up funding from the federal government uh due to uh COVID impact. Um, we have a bond refinancing opportunity uh that can come to us in about May or June of 2021. Um, the bigger impact, the savings is really in the sewer and the water funds from that. Um, we also need cost savings there. Uh, the potential impact for the general fund is probably about four or five hundred thousand dollars of savings, but that's savings that we don't have right now. So we've built the 21 budget on that refinancing not happening. So any savings that we uh get from that refinancing in the general fund or in the enterprise funds will help for, you know, just cost savings during that year versus the budget. Um, the next two items, you know, holding positions vacant, uh, we're um we're old hands at that, um, position vacancies and holding them for as long as we can and still maintaining services is something that we do year in and year out. Um, and then the other is also, uh, you know, we're old hands at this is finding operational efficiencies during the year. Um, and that's across every single department. Um, you know, managers and supervisors are tasked with not just operating, you know, up to the very peak of their budget, but trying to find ways to find savings during the year. Um, and then, you know, one of those ways of finding savings is also in our contracting and bidding process. Um, uh, with uh great help from uh city solicitor Barry Handberger, Megan Baum, uh, and Brian Wagner in the Treasury Office, we've converted, uh, basically our, well, we're in the process of converting all of our contract bidding, and this is state mandated for anything that's over twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, but even for services or professional services, we can do bidding on a an an online bidding platform called PennBid. There's zero cost to the city. The winning bidder pays a small fee, but there's no cost to the city. And what it does is allows us um access to um construction firms, uh, professional services providers, commodity providers across the entire state. So when we put a bid out on Penn, uh, if we would put a bid out a year ago, we would advertise in Lancaster newspapers, we put something on the city website, and we'd hope that contractors or commodity providers, you know, for chemicals or things like that, would submit a bid. We'd have a bid opening and then we go with the lowest responsible bidder. Um, what we get through PennBid is access to all of these providers across the state and really from around the country um who not just can go onto the site and see what we have out there for bids, they actually get a direct notification from PennBid when, um, let's say a a chemical provider uh for for uh water system, um, water system, chemical provider, when we put a bid out for that uh commodity, for that chemical, they actually get a notification through PennBid because they're a provider of that commodity. So we get axed to access to a much larger uh pool of uh potential bidders. And we've already seen some cost savings in that. Um, what we did, the the very first bid that we did on PennBid uh was for uh lead wipe testing and other things related to the uh lead hazard program. And the we we knew that we would have two bidders that we were that we knew. There was a third one that came in from, I think it was Illinois, um, that underbid the other two and across over a five-year period, that's gonna save us two hundred thousand dollars between the low bid and the next lowest bid. Um, we would not have gotten that third bidder had it not been for PennBid. Um, we've had other smaller savings and other uh bids that we've that we've done through PennBid. So that's just another way for us as we really ramp up the use of that uh to find savings. And then, uh, last but definitely not least is legislative action. Um, the mayor has been, um, you know, beating a path to Harrisburg or on Zoom to Harrisburg, uh, talking with everybody that she possibly can, uh, including the uh Lancaster City Alliance, the uh uh, ABC Committee of Lancaster City Alliance, the Chamber and a number of other organizations um in a push toward legislative action so that we get some other revenue options available, not just to Lancaster City, but the third-class cities across the state. Um, we got probably closer to that than we have in a long time, uh, but it fell short uh this year. And that's, you know, that whole effort is gonna redouble into 2021. Um, we cannot, uh, you know, as that earlier slide with the five-year projection showed, we cannot sustain the level of services that we provide solely relying on increasing property taxes and hoping that other revenues come in a little bit better than they did the year before. That's not a sustainable model for our residents, it's not a sustainable model for continuing to, you know, be able to provide police service, excuse me, police services and fire services and and all of the public works and and, uh, you know, housing inspection, all of that work. Um, it takes money to to do that work and and local government is a very labor-intensive effort. Um, it's why eighty percent of the general fund comes from uh salaries and benefits. So we've got to find a different way uh for the city to be able to raise those revenues. Um, which takes me to this, um, it behind me, if those of you can see me, um, see this slide and it's actually uh stenciled, I'm so glad we don't have to put together budget presentations this way anymore, but uh a hand stenciled uh with a typo in it. Um, budget presentation from, I think it's nineteen seventy-eight, and this was found when we were um doing the renovations of City Hall. And I held on to it and I figured at some point I'll use it in a budget presentation and it's coming in handy this year. So a couple of numbers I wanted to point out here, so remember nineteen seventy-eight or thereabouts. Um, they're looking at a deficit of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, which seems like an incredibly small amount, but when you put it toward this nine point two million dollar expense budget, it's about a seven and a half percent budget or budget deficit. What we have built into the 2021 is about an eight percent uh deficit. So not really out of the realm of, you know, uh, historical nature in terms of city budgets. And then, you know, looking at a few of the other uh revenue items here, water revenue. So the transfer from the water fund to the general fund was eight point eight percent of the budget. In 2021, it's gonna be about seven percent. Um, there used to be what was called revenue sharing. This was a straight uh transfer of dollars from the federal government to local governments. Uh, and that began, believe it or not, during the Nixon administration and it ended during the Reagan administration. Um, this is one of the years where uh it was still a steady stream of revenue to the city. And it was thirteen point four percent of the total general fund revenue. Um, that's that's different than community development block grant funding. So this there, the city got CDBG funding and this federal revenue share. Um, and then you look at earned income tax revenues were about nine point six percent of the budget. If you go back earlier on in this presentation, earned income taxes are about ten percent of the budget. And then real estate taxes were only thirty-seven point eight percent of the budget. But if you think about revenue sharing disappeared and that was supposed to be a federal government, you know, reduction in their budget there. Reality is all that does is falls on local taxpayers. Um, and because the property tax is the only source of revenue that we're given control over, if you add this thirteen point four to the thirty-seven point eight, you're at a little over fifty-one percent and our real estate tax revenue is close to fifty percent of our revenue. So the cut from the federal government fell directly on property owners in the city of Lancaster over, you know, this is again since nineteen seventy-eight. Um, and then the other thing just to point out here is fringe benefits were only nine point four percent of our expenses. And really what that shows you is some of that surely is an increase in pension liabilities, but the massive increase in medical costs over the the time period. Um, uh, for better or for worse, I've been around here long enough to remember when we had a three thousand dollar a year family medical insurance premium in two thousand six. And now those premiums are in the mid twenty thousand dollar ranges. Um, so that's really been an enormous cost driver on the expense side. So this budget, um, and then this is another little piece of history. I was looking up in Lancaster newspapers archives to try to find when that budget presentation was from. And I found this series of articles that was talking about how Lancaster and other cities are financially strangled. And it's a whole series about the lack of uh, the lack of change at the state level in how cities are allowed to raise revenues. Um, we talked probably a couple of uh budget years ago about the fact that we can't economic development our way out of the budget issue that we're in. This headline over here says city downtown revital uh revival adds little in taxes. Um, Art Morris, uh, who was the mayor at that time, is standing across the street from what was then Armstrong Board Industries headquarters. So there was huge economic impact uh of Armstrong moving their headquarters into the uh the city the way they did. Um, that didn't result in, that wasn't the panacea, right? We can't economic development our way out of this. And then this headline or this uh part of the article that I pulled out, it's a little bit blurry, but it says, despite the overwhelming evidence that state cities are 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 ailing, the tax reform bills in Harrisburg that received the most legislative attention this past year actually shortchanged Pennsylvania's ailing cities. The so-called Stalfer bill, the first major piece of local government tax reform in twenty years. This is nineteen eighty-two and this is the first thing in twenty years, so back to nineteen sixty-two, uh, which passed the Pennsylvania Senate last year, punishes the cities by freezing municipal tax rates and giving them no additional taxing power. So when Mayor Sarachi is talking about the need for legislative change, um, that's just not her talking about that, this is not a new thing. That was Mayor Sarachi, it was Mayor Gray, it was Mayor Smith-Gall, it was Mayor Stork, it was Mayor Morris and probably Mayor Scott before him. This has been an ongoing issue year after year. And it runs into this question here, should Lancaster City cut services or raise taxes? And that's really the 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 point where we are when we're looking at those five-year projections, looking at um the lack of flexibility that we have in the way that we raise revenues. We're faced with that decision, do we raise taxes or uh or cut services? In 2021, we've said we're not gonna do either one of those things. And the only reason we can do that is because of the reserve that we built up. Um, but again, that's not, clearly not a sustainable model. Um, so that's a whole lot of sort of dark and gloomy, right? Um, there are some good things going on, right? This is, um, and I'm not sure how many uh members of council may have received this, but this is a chart that was in uh the Lancaster City Alliance Impact Report, and it's really like the report card on the Building on Strength Economic Development Plan. Um, and I'm not gonna read off all these numbers, but you know, one of the looks is that um the per capita income of city residents and the goal of getting uh up to seventy percent of Pennsylvania's uh household income. And there's been movement there. There's been significant economic development in the city. Even during this year, there's been significant, significant economic development and some of which, you know, you all forwarded through the approval of the uh LGH rezoning and the the UPMC rezoning. One of the things that really jumps out is uh these numbers here, which are development outside of the commercial hub, so outside of the downtown core um and other commercial hubs of the city. That's where there's been uh really significant investment either uh underway right now or that's planned. Um, all in, close to a billion dollars of private investment, um, yeah, throughout the city in neighborhoods uh and in the downtown. So this is, you know, I've said before, we can't economic development our way out of the financial problems that we have. And at the same time, if we don't have economic development, if we don't have new housing being built, uh, new businesses being opened through in neighborhoods throughout the entire city, that's uh job opportunities that are lost, it's housing opportunities, uh, and in the, certainly in the case of the um the UPMC project, the Washington Place Equities and HTC project, um, the lack of new affordable housing in the city. So economic development is not the panacea, but it's also hugely necessary. Um, and then, you know, just, these are some of the things that are out there, right? That are good news, uh, both whether you're a resident of the city, whether you're a commuter into the city. Um, new housing that's coming to the city, new business opportunities that are coming to the city. These are, none of these is gonna pay off immediately. Right? They are either gonna get uh LRTA tax abatements or there're gonna be other uh, you know, phase-ins of of economic impact or tax impact for those those uh developments. But it is ultimately in the long run gonna be additional revenue to the city and not just in uh property taxes, but also, you know, I talked way earlier about earned income taxes and about how those are paid by folks who live in the city, regardless of where they work. A lot of the new development that's happening is residential development. That's gonna bring new uh new residents into the city, which also means new pa- new taxpayers into the city. So I'm hopeful that over a period of years, not to see, um, you know, an increase in, you know, activity in downtown and in neighborhoods, but we're also gonna see an increase in uh that earned income tax revenue because we've got more people actually living in the city. Um, so there are economic impacts and and economic benefits, the things that are going on right now. May take several years to pay off, but they will be coming. So that on the good news side, and then this is the last slide, which is just like, we don't know what other impacts are gonna come from COVID. Um, there's a lot of hope with the multiple announcements about vaccines um that we can during 2021 get back to some level of normalcy. Um, but we don't know, again, how long some of the economic impacts are gonna uh, you know, have an impact on us. We don't know, is there gonna be a federal aid uh package that's gonna come out? That's actually gonna uh be a benefit to municipalities, um, whether that's, you know, cities or or any other municipality. Um, you know, we did in 2020 get the benefit of CARES Act funding that went through the county. Um, about eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of funding from that came directly, will come directly to the city. Um, but we don't know if there's something more significant that's out there. Um, and, you know, I'll just say that we're hopeful that what all of the things that have had us say, oh, twenty twenty are not gonna repeat or get added off too in 2021. We've had our fill, thanks very much, of bad news, um, and so we're looking for some the much better news, but we're, you know, we build budgets based on what we know at the time um and what we can reasonably anticipate. Um, we don't build budgets on hope and we're not gonna build them on doom. Um, so there's some balance in between those two and we're hoping that the 21 budget uh strikes that balance. So I will stop talking and uh open it up to anybody who's got questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, I I will get us started. Um, I have a couple of questions um around the uh our pension obligations. Did you say that it it was up about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and our state aid is down. What the state is.
About three hundred. About three hundred some thousand dollars.
Okay, the state aid essentially offsets that cost, right? Is that the way?
Um, it helps to offset it. So, um, I put the the pension uh obligation slide back up. So the state aid covers about forty percent of the cost of the pension obligations that we have. Um, yeah, and that's grown over, that's the amount that it doesn't cover has grown over time.
Right.
Um, so we went from like about a hundred percent of the cost being covered in two thousand six, all the way down to about forty percent. And now really in in two thousand twenty-one, it's gonna be about thirty-seven percent. Um, unless there's another, you know, we turn things around and there's an increase in that state aid. And that's something that we have zero control over. Um, it is a determination of the state and the the revenue source that they have for that is through um insurance policies.
Okay. And um, related to that, you said that we are about just shy of eighty percent funded.
Right.
In our pensions, can you talk a little bit about how that compares with other third-class cities in Pennsylvania? Are we better funded, less well?
In terms of other third-class. In terms of other third class cities, when I, the last time I looked at the funded status, I believe that there were two third class cities that were in a better funded position than than Lancaster City. One of them was Harrisburg, and that's because they did a huge pension obligation bond issue. I forget how many years ago. I believe the other one was the city of Lebanon that had a better funded ratio than we did. I haven't looked at it in the last couple of years. See, I should have anticipated that question. I have a slide on that.
That's all right. That might be something for
I'll have that for Saturday.
That would be great. I have one more question, then I'll open it up. What I know that we'll probably dive into this a little bit more when we get down to the departments, but could you speak to just overall? If, when we looked at costs for for employees, are we looking at actually cutting employees? Are we looking at holding positions?
So there's a couple of different things. There were, there were at least two position eliminations of of non sworn positions in the police bureau.
Okay.
We have a number of positions that are new positions, mostly related in CPED and mostly related to lead related projects
Right.
that rather than budget them for the entire twelve months of the year, we're sort of stepping into those positions because some of them are going to take a couple of months to fill. So there's savings built in in some of the salaries because we're not budgeting the full annual salary for some of the positions. And then thirdly, typically we budget for every single position to be that's in the budget to be filled for the entire year, knowing that there are going to be retirements, there are going to be other vacancies are going to come up, and it's going to take time to fill some positions. And what falls to the bottom is basically the savings from those salaries that we're not spending during the year because of vacancies.
Right.
What we built in in two different places in the police budget and one place in the fire budget. And you'll see it on the staffing schedules, police and in fire. It's called allowance for vacancies. And essentially what we're doing is in advance, we are assuming there are going to be police officer vacancies. There are going to be school crossing guard vacancies because school is still for, you know, large part is closed right now. And then in the fire bureau that there are going to be vacancies in firefighter positions. So we've built in, I believe in the in the sworn officer, I think we've we've built in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of savings, basically an assumption that some positions won't be filled. And that amounts to about five new officer positions. And then another fifty thousand dollars in the school crossing guard line. So three hundred thousand dollars in the police budget and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the fire budget for for vacancies there. The difference between police vacancies and and fire vacancies is that because of the agreement that we have with fire union to maintain a certain staffing level, we're trying to make every effort to maintain a certain staffing level. When we have a vacancy on a shift, we're backfilling and we're bringing a firefighter back, but they're working at straight time, not at overtime. So that's a cost savings and it's an agreement that we came to years ago, five years ago with the with the fire union. So there's not as much of an economic benefit to a vacancy in the fire bureau as there is, and and this is just not about operational benefits, but straight dollar benefits. There's not as much benefit in the fire bureau to a vacancy as there is in
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? I'm watching, make sure. Okay. You're always so thorough, Patrick. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so that, if I'm keeping score correctly, takes care of bill number sixteen and seventeen and resolutions sixty two and sixty three. Mr. Harris, would it be okay if I took the bills together and the resolutions together to move them forward?
I'm sorry, the sixteen and seventeen are have already had first readings, so we don't need to really do anything with them.
Oh, they're going to automatically move into the next meeting. Okay.
Sixty two and sixty three and fifty nine that we haven't talked about yet, that we ought to have motions to move those to the full council.
Terrific. Then I'll hear motions to move Resolution sixty two and sixty three forward. You would normally have Mr. Soto on this one, Mr. President, if you're serving as
I'll second it.
Yeah, all in favor? I thank you very much. And then that takes us to Resolution fifty nine. That's the capital improvement plan changes. And that's you as well, Mr. Hopkins, I'm assuming?
Yes.
You can go right now. Sorry about
Okay, I'm sorry. I was thinking Mr. Harris was going to read something.
No, you're okay.
Okay, so this resolution is a pretty straightforward one. We have over a period, I think it, I think Matt Metzler said the other day that it's been his entire career with the city in effort to either replace or install ADA compliant sidewalk ramps throughout the entire city. During the two prior administrations ago, the city was sued because it had not been complying with the ADA to install or modify sidewalk ramps to to current ADA standards. I believe the number was somewhere in the like fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred individual ramps throughout the city that had to be done as a result of the consent decree. We've been plugging away at them. The Public Works Department has been plugging away with a contractor at the they took the highest priority ramps and over a period of years got it down to now just a relative handful of ramps that have to be completed to comply with the consent decree. There's been, you know, cost changes over a period of years from when we initially set up the the capital improvement budget for the twenty eighteen bond issue. And so what we're doing here with this amendment is adding four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the project for ADA ramps specifically related to the consent decree. And that should provide enough funding to completely finish all of the ramps related to the consent decree and hopefully get them all done by the end of twenty twenty one, which would be a year ahead of schedule because a consent decree would have had us required to finish them all by the end of twenty twenty two. So we'd be speeding up the process. Some of this is dependent, the the timeline is dependent on PennDOT. They're responsible for installing ramps on PennDOT owned streets when they're doing paving. So Lime Street is one of those. So there's some, maybe a little bit of wiggle room in that timeline, but the the hope is that we can complete all of the consent decree required ramps by the end of twenty twenty one.
Terrific. And just for clarification purposes, I think this is what you meant. So these funds, we don't anticipate needing to go back and and we can't occur these funds again. We think that this is how much it's going to cost us through the end.
Yes, right.
Terrific. Any other questions from the committee? From other members of council? Then I'll hear a motion to move this to full council on December eighth.
I'll second.
All in favor? I thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That concludes the finance committee.
Right. Wow, as always, the amount of information you can retain in your head at one time, Patrick, blows me away.
It helps having two other screens in my office. It's very helpful.
I'm going to give you a compliment, man.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Two screens and how many other big pieces of poster board?
Oh, I can only imagine.
That's, there's only one there, only one.
Next year, next year, I want it all on poster board. No more PowerPoint.
Hand stenciled. You got it. And hopefully in person.
It seems daring even to even to hope for that, but maybe, you know, if we keep our masks on, socially distanced, stay home as much as possible, maybe we'll get there. Wink, wink, nod, nod, crowd.
Welcome for the setup.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Big show we put on for the eight or nine people watching this, but you know, everybody's special. So anyway, I believe that brings us to the clerks report. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Of course, I've submitted this to you in writing, but some of the highlights here. I began meeting with the executive leadership team on a weekly basis. And those meetings have gone well and have helped me to get a sense of legislative priorities and things moving forward. They helped me to put together the budget for this or the agenda for this meeting and as well as the last meeting and meetings in the future. Translation, I met with Zara Falou, the city's language access coordinator, and restarted the translation of agendas into Spanish. The agenda for this meeting is posted online in Spanish, as was the last one. And we'll attempt to continue that into the future. That was something that had kind of dropped off when with a COVID hiccup there, when we took our meetings virtual. And evictions, I've continued to add information to a spreadsheet on information that's sent to us by the the Magisterial District Judges regarding eviction complaints that are filed in their offices. I researched two thousand three and two thousand four council resolutions on behalf of the constituent. I also reviewed annual resolutions and recognitions on behalf of the city's public art manager for an advanced calendar. Financial documents, I ensured the the city documents related to the recent parking authority bond issue and the Penn Vest loan were provided or signed and sent through to legal counsel. So that, unfortunately, the the parking authority bond issue closed today, so that one's done. And there's several miscellaneous items that list.
Thank you for that, Mr. Harris, and thank you for everything that you do. Councilors, anything else of interest before we wrap up the agenda for the evening? Okay, well, hearing none.
Mr. President.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. It might be appropriate at this point to talk about the proposed special meeting on the twenty ninth.
Oh, it might be. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. So we've become aware of of some some different reporting and notification requirements. And so just taking this opportunity to let the public know that we'll be having a special meeting on of all evenings in this year, December twenty ninth. So the long and short of it is that from the time that we actually announce that we'll be meeting on the budget, from the time that that's actually published in the paper, so not when we send it, but when you see it, that we need to give twenty days before actually voting to adopt a particular budget. And so we figured that if that happened, we'd end up that the soonest we could possibly the soonest we could possibly vote on it might be December twenty fifth or the Saturday after. So we thought we'd spare all of you that and went to the evening of December twenty ninth. And Mr. Harris, we arrived on at six thirty PM?
He'd said six, but six thirty works also.
Great. We're going to go with six. We'll keep it earlier, move people on with our evening. So you can anticipate a budget, a a special meeting for a final vote on the city of Lancaster budget. I said final and, you know, who knows? But what I mean is a first possible vote to actually adopt a budget for calendar year twenty twenty one for the city of Lancaster on December twenty ninth at six PM. So now you know. And please come tune in for all our budget meetings, because there's I just can't tell you how much there is to learn about municipal budgets, if if it's something you have the the stomach and the interest for. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Harris. One more time, anything pressing, councilors?
If I can just throw out the reminder that for the throngs again who are watching, the full city budget is available on the city website, and we'll get this summary presentation up there also. For everybody who wants to follow along at the December fifth Finance Committee meeting.
Great.
December fifth from ten to three in excruciating detail.
We'll see you right back here. It's
We could, we could make it more detailed for me. I'm sorry.
Yes, we can.
You're good. There's a lot of detail in that beard. Anyway. Jokes aside, and all of these jokes are basically for the benefit of looks at attendees list DJ. But great. Thank you, everybody. I hope that you had a lovely holiday of this past week. Please do everything everything that you can to keep yourselves and your family and friends safe. There is a frankly excruciating article in Lancaster newspapers identifying the the stories and faces of some of the five hundred Lancaster County residents that have been lost to COVID nineteen. So if you need any help making it real or bringing it home, there it is. But just in case anybody catches this on YouTube later, wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance, stay home as much as possible. We love you and we want to see you in twenty twenty one. And with that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All right, we are adjourned, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Bye bye.